For big city vibes and small town charm.
Head to the downtown Lee Summit Farmers Market where local meets fresh. Then grab a cup of coffee. And discover a variety of shops and boutiques just around the corner. Continue the fun in downtown Lee Summit at a retro arcade bar. Discover your new beer at one of our six locally owned breweries. Cool off with some handcrafted cocktails at happy hour. End the night with live music and good company. Lee Summit, Missouri.
Hello, Lee Summit. I'm Laura and this is your flash briefing for the week of November 18th. Heads up Jackson County taxpayers, Lee Summit City Hall is currently unable to process tax payments, print receipts, or create waivers. Taxpayers are advised to visit Jackson County location or pay online at jacksongov.org. City council will meet for regular session Tuesday night, six in council chambers in City Hall. Meetings are open to the public or watch live on the city's YouTube channel. If you can't watch, catch the recorded meeting on demand on the YouTube channel or by subscribing to the council debrief newsletter, which breaks down three to four key agenda items. Subscribe at cityofls.net. Head to Howard Station Park on November 22nd as we light downtown in thousands of sparkling lights for the mayor's tree lighting at 6:30 PM. This year's theme is Miracle on Main Street. Enjoy shopping, musical performances, a visit from Santa and Mrs. Claus, and much more to get you into the holiday spirit. Holiday shopping is in full swing. Need a stocking stuffer? Check out the Lee Summit Marketplace located in the lobby of City Hall. It has great items like Lee Summit branded socks, Tervis tumblers, coasters, and more. Show off your Lee Summit pride. It's open eight to five, Monday through Friday. And have you ever wondered how your local government works? How the city budget is developed and where the city gets its water? The Citizens Leadership Academy will help answer those questions and more. Tour facilities and learn about the inner workings of city government from city leaders and elected officials. Participants will attend seven sessions beginning in January. Applications are accepted through December 13th and space is limited. Find the application on the city's website. Thanks for listening and have a great week.
Welcome to the Lee Summit Sign Department. We are going to walk you through our process from start to finish. We make signs as needed here. It's not like we just go out into the field and place a speed limit sign here, no parking here. Our traffic engineers, they go through and they'll do field studies. They'll send us down an engineering work order for us to go out, place new signs or remove signs as needed. Coming from the material, our blanks come in and they're just aluminum blanks. We can put our white, our red, our fluorescent yellow-green, whatever. And basically what it looks like is just that there. Throw it up into the roller. And once we got it covered, take it to our work table here. And Tim will cut the corners, cut all the access off to where it's lined up right. As far as the plotter and the software that we use, there's a street name sign there. And he's going to go ahead and print that out on the plotter so you can see the plotter and how it operates and runs. There are standards for the height, even just on letters on the sign blank. Basically what we have on the computer there is it's pretty much set up to those. And it goes through, it's got a very small but sharp needle that goes through and cuts everything out, letter by letter. Once that's done cutting, our next stage would be bringing it over here. Currently picking out the sign letters right now. We call it weeding, or picking, or however you want to call it. Next, putting it on the transfer tape. Then after it's taped, we bring it over to the roller. That's where we apply it to the actual sign blank. And we'll roll it through one time just to get the air bubbles out. And the last stage is basically just taking the transfer tape off the front of it. And there's a finished product of the street name sign. We'll take you out to the field and show you our process that we go through. We're going to go out and follow our sign guys, get something installed for you. This is where we check our underground utilities. Tim, you got AT&amp;T?
AT&amp;T is back here.
EverG, Google, so we should be good to go. We normally put all of our stuff together out in the field. Then once the base is installed, we'll go ahead and put the post in there. We've come up to perfect. And that's how we do it. Simple, quick.
It's Mayor Pryor.
Thank you, Mayor. Quite a few of us are getting questions. I know I've gotten a few questions about the plans. So I didn't know if, just for the public knowledge. I'm not a politician. I feel like I'm just an average person in Lee Summit. They have a football field set up inside these cones are their football fields. Our two car garage is going to, we're going to bring the driveway back through here and it's going to go right here. And then... So my family has chickens. When we first got chickens, my husband said, "Don't treat them as your pets. Treat them as chickens because we're going to end up, we're going to be eating the eggs and I would like to use them for meat. So don't treat them as your pets." Well, we now have six chickens that I consider my pets and I will not let him kill for meat. So we live downtown and we love living downtown. These are my children. The first one's Lincoln, and Amira, and Sophia, and Caleb. This is a great neighborhood. Downtown is one big community. And all of the kids get together and they play basketball. And we like to walk to the farmer's market. It's an easy walk, probably less than 10 minutes. The farmer's market has always been a very important part of my life and my family's life. As a matter of fact, when my daughter started kindergarten, I dropped her off and I was going shopping at the farmer's market right behind Lee Summit Elementary. And I was teary eyed because she was my first and she was going off to kindergarten. And Terry, the butterfly lady, the one that's in the purple shirt and she used to make little butterfly stickers for everyone. She gave me a big hug and was just so empathetic to the fact that my daughter had just started school.
How are you guys doing?
Doing well. How are you?
Doing very good.
A lot of the farmers there, my kids have, they've watched my kids grow up. I love Lee Summit in general. I love that it still has a small town feel while embracing growth and the arts and diversity. And I feel like downtown specifically embodies that. My kids go to Lee Summit Elementary and a lot of their teachers live downtown. And a lot of the business owners from downtown live downtown. So when we're out walking downtown, we see so many people we know. I lived in Africa until I was five. And then we moved to the United States and I've lived in Lee Summit since. A lot of my childhood, my mom was a single mom. And I feel like I was essentially raised by my community and being on council. And it's just such an important way to give back to the community that raised me.
I say your name.
I'm Mia Pryor.
Do you solemnly swear?
Do you solemnly swear?
That I possess the qualifications.
That they available 2022. The election process was fun. I got to go door to door and talk to people, which is my absolute favorite thing to do, is talking to people and learning about people. I even had people inviting me into their house for dinner or inviting me back to their house to meet their spouse. And I actually, I knocked on a door and the lady that answered the door was my kindergarten teacher. So it was a lot of fun. Is it on? Hi, everyone. I'm Councilmember Mia Pryor. Thank you very much for coming tonight. I have one on. Can you not? Maybe I went too far. I love being a council rep for District One. I know everyone says this, but District One is by far, in my opinion, the best district. Rain Tree Lake, that's part of District One. I love that community. Actually, my husband and I got married at the clubhouse in Rain Tree Lake. I really love all of South Lee Summit. I love the growth that they're going to be experiencing soon and that they've already experienced. I wanted to say that if you guys have a concern, please, please come tell us what your concern is because we can only, we can only address and help with what we know. We're there to kind of bridge that gap, bridge that gap between constituents in the city. And we're the voice of our constituents. And we can go to the city and voice what their concerns are, what their ideas are. So if you have a concern, definitely make us aware. So my big priorities are public safety. That's always one of my top priorities. I've always wanted to make sure that first responders were supported. I think that that's super important to me and to many in our city. But also, I, I wanted to influence the growth in Lee Summit. I wanted to influence the type of businesses we get here and the type of activities there are to do for our families. If we're going to continue to grow downtown, how important it is to focus on people that already live here and the infrastructure we already have in place.
Our first presentation tonight is going to be Assistant City Manager Ryan Elam, who's going to talk about that very exciting farmer's market plaza.
But I want to show you the most recent rendering, fly through video of that. That's really the best way to kind of get a good sense of what this will look like in the near future.
To see it developing into something as big as it's going to be across from City Hall is super exciting to me. I can't wait for it to get built and to start welcoming people into what the farmer's market is going to be, but also everything else that goes along with that development. You want to hold it? Grab it. Perfect. Thank you, guys. Thank you so much. Have a good rest. I'm just an average person in Lee Summit that wanted to be a voice of many that, that sometimes feel like they don't have a voice. Yeah, I'm not a politician. I'm just a mom that cares.
Welcome, everyone. Would you please rise for the invocation and stay standing for the Pledge of Allegiance?
Heavenly Father, bless those that have come together tonight for good dialogue. Help us as we serve the constituency that depend on us for meaningful decisions. Help us to act with character and conviction. Help us to listen with understanding and goodwill. Help us to speak with charity and moderation. Guide us to be the leaders that our citizens expect. And finally, renew us with the strength to build and maintain a community that we can all be proud of. Amen.
Again, welcome, everyone. I'm calling to order the City of Lee Summit Regular Session Number 21. Can I get a roll call, please?
Thank you, Mayor. Councilmember Hodges.
Here.
Councilmember DeMoro.
Here.
Councilmember Pryor. Councilmember Shields.
Here.
Mayor Pro Tim Lopez.
Here.
Councilmember Rader, absent. Councilmember Lovell.
Here.
Councilmember Carlisle.
President.
Mayor Baird.
Thank you. Can I, first thing on the agenda is the approval of the agenda. I have a motion to adopt the agenda by Councilmember DeMoro, seconded by Councilmember Pryor. Discussion. Seeing none, please cast your vote. Missing one. That's all right. All votes are in. Please record the vote. Passed unanimously. Thank you. Next is the approval of the consent agenda. I have a motion to adopt by Councilmember Shields, seconded by Councilmember Hodges. Discussion. Seeing none, please cast your vote. All votes are in. Please record the vote. It does pass unanimously. Thank you. Next is the council roundtable. Items of general interest, things going on in your community. Councilmember Shields.
Thank you, Mayor. This Friday is the mayor's tree lighting, if I'm not mistaken. It's going to be Miracle on Main Street this year. Is that right?
Miracle on Main Street, yes.
Will this, will this be our last Main Street lighting? Are we going to move to Green Street Plaza next year?
I think so. I think that's the plan, at least on the downtown Main Street, as talked about. I think it'll open up bigger space.
Exciting.
Yep.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you. No. Well, I mean, I will oppose that. Okay, next would be public comments. Any commenters tonight?
Mayor, we did not have any public comments turned in and we don't have anyone here tonight to speak.
Well, would you, as our city clerk, please read Resolution Number 24-15?
Thank you, Mayor. Resolution, I'm sorry. 24-15, a resolution adopting the 2025 Legislative Intergovernmental Program for the City of Lee Summit, Missouri.
All right, thank you. We have a resolution read. We have a motion to adopt by Councilmember Carlisle, seconded by Councilmember Hodges. Discussion. Seeing none, please cast your vote. All votes are in. Please record the vote. It passes eight zero. And then Ms. Lombardo, would you also read Resolution 24-16?
Thank you, Mayor. Resolution 24-16. A resolution to repeal and replace Resolution 22-14, authorizing additional funds to the City of Lee Summit Water Utilities and Public Works Departments. Application for grant funding from the Missouri Department of Natural Resources for the State of Missouri American Rescue Plan for Water Infrastructure Community Programs.
All right, thank you. We have a resolution on the floor. We have a motion to adopt by Councilmember, Councilmember Shields, seconded by Councilmember Carlisle. Do we have any discussion? Seeing none, please cast your vote. All votes are in. Please record the vote. It does pass eight zero. Takes us to ordinances forwarded from committee. We don't usually do this, but I just thought before we read this, we could have maybe Mr. Van Buskirk come up and Mr. Dunning, if you want to say anything, but, or the liaisons. But we've been working on this for a long time. It's a long time coming. It's been a few years now. And we're, we have on the, we're about to put on the table an ordinance for authorizing the city manager to put together a public service agreement for the EDC. And we have a much bigger board with a lot of different sectors of the community represented on the board, but also a new, new bylaws that empower the board a little bit more than over, than was before, rather than being more executive board driven. And we've got some, some people in the room here I see today that have done a lot of work. So I do look forward to thanking them. So, Mr. Dunning?
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. Mark Dunning, City Manager, thought I'd introduce the topic real quick. So we throw the term out PSA. That's a public service agreement. Just for those that may be watching, we fund public service agreements with our community partners. We call them downtown Main Street, the EDC, the Visitors Bureau, through what we call Business and Industry Funds. So this is not coming out, I want to make this very clear, it's not coming out of a general fund. It's a dedicated, we call them hotel tax, right? Bed nights. There's a tax on those bed nights. And that revenue goes to fund our community partners in providing services to us as a community. So this is one of those with the Lee Summit Economic Development Council. As you all know, we've, we've had this relationship in the past and we, we've restructured that relationship. I'll let Mr. Van Buskirk talk to a little bit about what, what they've been working on. But the PSA is in place. It's been through finance and budget. Be happy to dive into some details there. But it's structured to be a three-year public service agreement with an increased funding level each year to grow that EDC environment. And I guess, so with that, I'll turn it over to Mike Van Buskirk. He's the Chair of the Lee Summit Economic Development Council and he can present what's contained within the PSA.
Thank you. Can we pull that up?
Yeah.
You want the term sheet?
Okay.
Key provisions?
Yep.
Thank you.
Mayor and council, Mike Van Buskirk, glad to be back before you again. Seems like I was just here not too long ago. And so I won't go into a very long presentation, but I did want to give an opportunity to answer any questions from the last time we were here before you. Also want to introduce in the audience two of the officers that are with me today. John Ellis, who's Secretary, and Jackie McCormick, who is our Treasurer. And as Mayor said, those, as well as many others, including some of you, have been very helpful to bring us to, to this day. What's in front of you is a summary of key terms. Mayor, I believe you were the one that brought it up in one of our board meetings and said, "Should be great if we had a summary of key terms." And so we ran with that. And that's what you see before you today. I will, I will just highlight a couple of things real quick. The completion of Phase Two elements. This is going back to our letter agreement that you all recall. The establishment of the vision statement and core values. We have a working group of the board that is meeting tomorrow, actually, to work on that. So we're on track to have something that that working group will bring to our full board for consideration at our December meeting. On operational task, I will let you know that Teresa Evans, our interim director, her contract is up at the end of the year. But we have had discussions with her, staying on a month-to-month basis, which is great. We're also exploring some options to bring on some additional staffing to help with some of the, really the back of the office kind of things so she can be doing more productive things elsewhere. Board member conflict of interest policy under operational task. That has been completed and approved by the board. Code of Ethics, we had a draft of that agreement that the board reviewed at our November meeting. We had some comments on that. We'll be bringing back that back to our board at our December meeting. One thing that I think you probably wanted an update on is our president search process. So at our last board meeting, we reviewed, reviewed a job description that the board approved. Some individuals had actually requested the job description, so we are sharing that. And the board approved starting the process of looking for the next president for the organization. So a lot, that was a big meeting. We got a lot done. As the mayor said, I think, I feel very good about the new board structure. I think that was our third meeting and we have got a lot done in three meetings. So I'm feeling pretty good about that going forward. With that, I'll stop and answer any questions that you all have.
Yes, questions? Councilmember Shields?
Thank you, Mayor. So one of the other things I think has been brought up in recent EDC meetings is the relationship with the school board. So is that, could you maybe touch on that? Just to show us kind of other major investors that are working on getting back on board?
Yes, very timely, actually. So I made a presentation to the school board several weeks ago, probably two months ago. Time's been flying. Just to update them, similar to what I did last time was before you. We're scheduled to go before their, their meeting in December, their first meeting. There is a draft of a MOU, which is the agreement that we had previously with them, that they reviewed. And actually, Jackie and I just received comments back from their legal counsel. Before I came to this meeting, I looked at it in my car and they were very minor. So I don't see any major issues on that. So if we stay on track and the meeting schedule works, I know they've got a lot on their plate right now. But if we stay on the schedule that has been talked about, we hope to be before them twice in December and have that in place before the end of the year as well.
And then I was wondering if it'd be possible for city manager to maybe put up that spreadsheet showing the fund balance, just that everybody understands. Kind of, we talked about the sort of deficit budget that fund's going to run for the next few years, but I just thought it'd be good for folks to see before they vote on this. So do you want to talk through this, Mark, or?
Sure. Yep, be happy to. So what we're looking at here is our kind of historical trends and actual data from what we call our BNI Funding, Business and Industry Fund, going back to 2020. And you can see things have changed over time. At one point in time, we were funding the Chamber of Commerce. Those were funds that were going towards tourism. But now we've got the Lee Summit Visitors Bureau up. So you can see where those numbers drop off there and they, they start to pick up down here. I would say that currently in place, we have, have committed to funding the Visitors Bureau, the DMO, to these levels over a three-year period. We've also committed to PSA with downtown Main Street with these levels up here. And then what's being considered this evening are, is the EDC at these levels right here. What you see here is that over time, the fund balance within the BNI fund, we track this separately. We don't co-mingle these funds. So we do have a healthy fund balance down here for this fund. We had, you could see here with the EDC, we had been funding to the tune of anywhere between 225,000 to 275,000 over time. And then through some COVID times, we reduced that. And then we've restructured and repopulated the board at this time. So funding over time has grown, which is... So funding over time has grown, which has, has gone into that fund balance. And so the thought here is, as we, as we make these commitments to fund these organizations, it's been made very clear in our discussions that should this funding not be sustainable and something happen in our predictions of where this might go, that we will need to have tough discussions. We know along the way, we're going to be adding more hotels to, to the mix. And the hope is that the BNI fund grows with, with the hotels that are coming on board. And then in my mind, as we, as we put the, the DMO, the Visitors Bureau to work, being an, an engine to attract and drive visitors to Lee Summit, that should help fund this as well. So in a way, we're creating the engine to make this go, and, and we're committing to some funding levels, knowing that, you can see down here, the expenditures are exceeding what the annual revenues would be. These are assumptions. But we do have a healthy fund balance here to bridge that gap, and then hopefully everything, I always like to say, we turn the dials as we dial this in, and, and as we get a clearer picture for what the future holds, we'll turn those dials.
So, so we're looking at this with our, what we think are pretty conservative estimates about these revenues still having close to a million-dollar fund balance after three years, and at that point, being able to reevaluate all these funding levels for these different organizations?
That's correct.
Okay. Thank you so much. I just thought it'd be really helpful for everybody to see that before we vote. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
Um, no, I'm just waiting for other questions. I'll just say, I know that the board has, is definitely going to be more empowered, I think, as, as a whole. But this first part has been a really heavy lift for the board, and it's become a, very much an operational board for the short term, hopefully not for the long term.
That's my goal.
Yeah. And so thank you to the leadership team and, and certain people on the, on the board that have really stepped forward to help. Everything from, you know, the, the new documents, the bylaws and such, the job description, I think numerous people have been involved in that. But also even working in, in the office to help Teresa with billing and such. And I know that there's, we haven't really, I don't know that we reported out, had a chance to report out that you've had success billing businesses, as far as invoicing, I should say, for membership into the EDC. So we brought in a, a bit of money last month.
Yes, we've, I, I can report that of the invoices we've sent out, we've received payment on 40% of those. So actually, this weekend, there was some reach out to, to the board to start doing, actually, two things, thank you calls to those who have already paid. And this is for 2025, so people, a lot of those folks have paid early, in the way I look at it. But, and also follow-ups and reach outs to, to those that haven't. So yes, very pleased with that, and also pleased with the new folks who have asked for information on becoming members as well.
So there's definitely a pent-up demand. They're wanting to get back at it and get, get back organized, and, and so that's a great thing. And so I just want to say thank you to all of you for all of that.
Thank you. Because it's- We have the whole board. Thank you. We appreciate it.
All right. I think we'll go ahead and read this ordinance. Stick around, though, just in case we have another question. No, you don't have to be up here, but, you know, you never know. Councilmember Shields, would you please read Bill Number 24 dash 205?
Thank you, Mayor. I move for second reading of Bill Number 24 dash 205, an ordinance approving a public service agreement between the City of Lee Summit, Missouri, and the Lee Summit Economic Development Council for services to be provided to the city and authorize the city manager to execute the same by and on behalf of the city.
Thank you. Have a motion to move to second reading, Bill Number 24 dash 205, by Councilmember Shields, seconded by Councilmember Pryor. Discussion? Seeing, seeing none, please cast your vote. All votes are in, please record the vote. It does pass unanimously. So one more reading, and we'll have this done by the end of the year. That was the goal. Yep, thank you.
I now move for adoption of-
Oh, is it two readings tonight? Oh, two readings tonight, because this came through finance and budget, didn't it? Ah.
We did recommend for approval.
Here we go. Councilmember Shields, for adoption, please.
I now move for adoption of Bill Number 24 dash 205, an ordinance approving a public service agreement between the City of Lee Summit, Missouri, and the Lee Summit Economic Development Council for services to be provided to the city and authorize the city manager to execute the same by and on behalf of the city.
Thank you. We have a motion to adopt Bill Number 24 dash 205, by Councilmember Shields, seconded by Councilmember Hodges. Discussion? Please cast your vote. All votes are in, please record the vote. It is adopted. We just, we just funded the EDC, so good news. All right. Councilmember Demora, would you please read Bill Number 24 dash 206?
I move, I move to advance to second reading, Bill Number 24 dash 206, an ordinance awarding the bid for project number 576 dash 10C for the East Fork Little Blue Area Three and Four Stormwater Project to VF Anderson Builders LLC in the amount of $3,554,705, and authorizing the city manager to execute an agreement for the same.
Thank you. We have a motion to move to second reading, Bill Number 24 dash 206, by Councilmember Demora, seconded by Councilmember Hodges. Discussion? Seeing none, please cast your vote. All votes are in, please record the vote. It moves to second reading unanimously. Councilmember Demora, would you please?
Uh, move for, move for adoption, Bill Number 24 dash 206, an ordinance awarding the bid for project number 576 dash 10C for the East Fork Little Blue Area Three and Four Stormwater Project to VF Anderson Builders LLC in the amount of $3,554,705, and authorizing the city manager to execute an agreement for the same.
Thank you. We have a motion to adopt Bill Number 24 dash 206, by Councilmember Demora, seconded by Councilmember Hodges. Discussion? Please cast your vote. All votes are in, please record the vote. That bill is adopted unanimously. Councilmember Hodges, would you please read Bill Number 24 dash 207?
I move to second reading, Bill Number 24 dash 207, an ordinance awarding the bid for project number 575 for the Third Street Improvements from Jefferson Street to Blue Parkway to Miles Excavation Incorporated in the amount of $6,249,762.81, and authorizing the city manager to execute an agreement for the same.
Thank you. Have a motion to move to second reading, Bill Number 24 dash 207, by Councilmember Hodges, seconded by Councilmember Demora. Discussion? Seeing none, please cast your vote. All votes are in, please record the vote. It does move to second reading. Councilmember Hodges, would you please?
I move for the adoption of Bill Number 24 dash 207, an ordinance awarding the bid for project number 575 for the Third Street Improvements from Jefferson Street to Blue Parkway to Miles Excavation Incorporated in the amount of $6,249,762.81, and authorizing the city manager to execute an agreement for the same.
Thank you. We have a motion to adopt Bill Number 24 dash 207, by Councilmember Hodges, seconded by Councilmember Carlisle. Discussion? Please cast your vote. All votes are in, please record the vote. It's adopted unanimously. Thank you. Councilmember Lovell, would you please read Bill Number 24 dash 208?
I move for second reading, Bill Number 24 dash 08, an ordinance approving the award of RFQ Number 2025 dash 011 for professional engineering services for the Southeast Douglas Street Improvements, Blue Parkway to Fourth Street, project to Wilson and Company Incorporated for an amount not to exceed $797,930, and authorizing the city manager to execute an agreement for the same.
Thank you. We have a motion to move to second reading, Bill Number 24 dash 208, by Councilmember Lovell, seconded by Councilmember Carlisle. Discussion? Seeing none, please cast your vote. All votes are in, please record the vote. Goes forward unanimously. Councilmember Lovell, would you please?
I move for adoption, Bill Number 24 dash 08, an ordinance approving the award of RFQ Number 2025 dash 011 for professional engineering services for the Southeast Douglas Street Improvements, Blue Parkway to Fourth Street, project to Wilson and Company Incorporated for an amount not to exceed $797,930, and authorizing the city manager to execute an agreement for the same.
Thank you. Have a motion to adopt Bill Number 24 dash 208, by Councilmember Lovell, seconded by Councilmember Pryor. Discussion? Please cast your vote. All votes are in, please record the vote. It's adopted unanimously. Thank you. Councilmember Carlisle, would you please read Bill Number 24 dash 209?
Thank you, Mayor. I move Bill Number 24 dash 209, an ordinance awarding the bid for project number 571 to the, for the Prior Road Improvements from Longview Road to Hook Road to Clarkson Construction Company in the amount of $24,988,854.74, authorizing the city manager to execute an agreement for the same.
Thank you. We have a motion to move to second reading, Bill Number 24 dash 209, by Councilmember Carlisle, seconded by Councilmember Shields. Discussion? Seeing none, please cast your vote. All votes are in, please record the vote. It goes unanimously to second reading. Councilmember Carlisle, would you please?
Thank you, Mayor. I move Bill Number 24 dash 209, an ordinance awarding the bid for project number 571 for the Prior Road Improvements from Longview Road to Hook Road to Clarkson Construction Company in the amount of $24,988,854.74, and authorizing the city manager to execute an agreement for the same be adopted.
Thank you. We have a motion to adopt Bill Number 24 dash 209, by Councilmember Carlisle, seconded by Councilmember Pryor. Discussion? Please cast your vote. All votes are in, please record the vote. It does pass unanimously. Thank you all. Councilmember Carlisle, would you please read Bill Number 24 dash 210? Oh, Councilmember Pryor, would you please read Bill Number 24 two-one zero?
Thank you, Mayor. I move to advance to a second reading, Bill Number 24 dash two-one zero, an ordinance awarding the bid for project number 997 for the Sampson Road Bridge Replacement and Stormwater Improvements Project to Rodmacher Brothers Excavating, Inc. in the amount of $3,63,499.20, and authorizing the city manager to execute an agreement for the same.
Thank you. We have a motion to move to second reading, Bill Number 24 dash two-one zero, by Councilmember Pryor, seconded by Councilmember Hodges. Discussion? Seeing none, please cast your vote. All votes are in, please record the vote. Does go forward unanimously. Councilmember Pryor, would you please?
I move for adoption, Bill Number 24 dash two-one zero, an ordinance awarding the bid for project number 997 for the Sampson Road Bridge Replacement and Stormwater Improvements Project to Rodmacher Brothers Excavating, Inc. in the amount of $3,63,499.20, and authorizing the city manager to execute an agreement for the same.
Thank you. We have a motion to adopt Bill Number 24 dash two-ten, by Councilmember Pryor, seconded by Councilmember Carlisle. Discussion? Please cast your vote. All votes are in, please record the vote. It does pass unanimously. Thank you. Councilmember Shields, would you please read Bill Number 24 dash two-eleven?
Thank you, Mayor. I move for second reading, Bill Number 24 dash two-on-one, an ordinance approving award of RFQ 2025 dash 23 to Affinis Corporation, Wilson and Company, Inc., for on-call professional land surveying services and authorizing the city manager to execute individual agreements of the same for a period of one year with four possible one-year renewals.
Thank you. We have a motion to move to second reading, Bill Number 24 dash two-one-one, by Councilmember Shields, seconded by Councilmember Carlisle. Discussion? Seeing none, please cast your vote. All votes are in, please record the vote. It passes eight-zero. Councilmember Shields, would you please?
Yeah, I now move for adoption of Bill Number 24 dash two-on-one, an ordinance approving award of RFQ 2025 dash 23 to Affinis Corporation and Wilson and Company, Inc., for on-call professional land surveying services and authorizing the city manager to execute individual agreements of the same for a period of one year with four possible one-year renewals.
Thank you. We have a motion to adopt Bill Number 24 dash two-on-one, by Councilmember Shields, seconded by Councilmember Pryor. Discussion? Please cast your vote. All votes are in, please record the vote. It is adopted unanimously, and that takes us to council comments. Oh, committee reports. Did I skip that? Oh, it snuck in, it snuck in at the bottom. Committee reports. Councilmember Shields?
Thank you, Mayor. Rules Committee is going to meet this Thursday at 11:30 via Zoom, and we're going to continue our discussion of televising board and committee meetings. So thank you, Councilmember Demora, for bringing that one to our attention. We're really digging in. I think we're going to have some recommendations soon. And then Finance and Budget Committee is going to meet December 2nd, which I can't believe we're not going to have another council meeting before then, because the year's almost over. And we'll meet December 2nd at 4:00 PM, and I think discussing Budget Amendment Number Three. So, uh, look forward to those. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Demora?
Thank you. I, we had a public works meeting yesterday afternoon at 5:00 PM, and rolled the tape back, those last six items we did last night, so.
Couple higher items on there.
Not much more to say. We just read them.
CIP.
Oh, and, yes, there is something else. We had this, the, the rollout, the presentation of the CIP for 2026. That was the highlight, actually. A lot of good things.
Public info will be-
Public info will be spring. On your mic. Thank you.
Thank you. Right. Now we will go to council comments. Okay. Yes, Councilmember Pryor?
Thank you. Well, so I, this weekend, on Saturday, my son had a robotics competition in another city near ours, but not ours. And I am so grateful for our city and our Public Works Department, because it was a mess. Like, there was like one-way streets, and then another one-way street, all going like in one direction, and then parking everywhere. Like, I'm just grateful that our city is not as, as much of a mess. Like, I, I'm grateful for our city, because- for the planning, yes. Well, and, and, yeah, for just the everything in our city, because it was, it was a mess trying to get around that city. So, that's it. Thanks.
Thank you. Councilmember Carlisle?
Thank you. I just want to wish everybody a happy Thanksgiving, since we won't see each other before then. Well, except for a few of us. But that'll be via Zoom, so I wish everybody a happy Thanksgiving.
Yes, thank you. Yes, Councilmember Pryor?
And to your daughter, happy birthday, because we have the same birthday.
Nice. Okay, that takes us to staff roundtable. Mr. Dunning?
Just a few quick items. Mayor, we sent you information via text and via email, a boil advisory that's in effect up in, in the north area of town. It was a known emergency repair on a water line, so we're working diligently on that. Utilities are proving to be a little problematic. But we're working as fast as we can to get that, it's, it's controlled, right? But with the work, we do, did need to issue a boil advisory, so we'll work through that as quick as we can and, and keep everybody informed. Residents are being informed. All those impacted are receiving notification of that work. And then, gosh, Public Works, heavy lift again. I think of all this infrastructure, it's 38.6 million that was approved tonight. Little known fact is, over half of that is federally funded, so we've been very successful in working with our, our partners in getting these projects. And again, kudos to Public Works and Water Utilities and our staff, and being in a great position that if more funding becomes available, we had a resolution tonight where more funding became available, and absolutely, we'll take it. So we're in a good spot to continue to do that. So kudos to the crew for being in a good position for that. And then, yes, happy Thanksgiving to everyone. That's it. Thanks, Mayor.
Thank you. Thanks to the, your staff and yourself for all your hard work. It certainly has been paying off. So with that, we will adjourn this meeting at 6:35.